Bringing this meeting to order, I am Larry Harvey, the chairman. Invocation today will be led by Pastor Daniel Helms from the Branch Community Church. Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Commissioner Leota Wilkinson. All rise if you're able to do so.
Hey, let's pray. Father, this morning, I'm grateful for the gospel. I'm grateful that you love me and all of my failures and shortcomings, and that you died for me and rose from the dead. And so, Lord, I'm grateful I live in this county. These leaders here are a big part of why this county is such a great place to live, and so I pray for them now. I pray as they provide leadership and direction in our community that you would guide them and direct them. I pray the decisions that they make would be pleasing to you. And so, I lift them up to you right now and pray that you bless the rest of this meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Helms and thank you Commissioner Wilkinson. It's great to be here on Tuesday, February 13th, and we look forward to a very productive meeting. Next on our agenda is approval of the amendments. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the Board of County Commissioners.
Proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. We're going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting, call to order our Port Authority meeting, and the first item of business there is to approve our minutes of the Port Authority regular meeting, January 9th.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes.
Proper motion. Do we have a second? A proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Is there any public comment today on Port Authority items? This would be Port Authority only. And seeing no one coming to the front, we have any cards on that, Ashley Kaye? We will close the public comment portion of the Port Authority. Commissioners, is there any general discussion on Port Authority matters? And seeing none? Oh, Mr. Turner, I'm sorry.
Yes, right quick, Mr. Chairman. I've been told that the, and I know that the Port Authority owns the jail property. I know that we're looking into the possibility of trying to get that switched to the county, and they're doing some research on if we can with the USRD loan that went through that and what have you. I just wanted to make the board aware that they are, we are looking in or the staff is looking into that, and that I think that sooner rather than later, we need to look into that, if we can, try to get that switched over into the county's name versus the Port Authority's name for that piece of property because of liability reasons.
I agree.
So, that's all I had, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for sharing that. I agree with that. Any further discussion on any matters? Seeing none, we're going to re- we're going to get rid of our Port Authority meeting, go right back into our Board of County Commission meeting. And presentations, our first presentation, we're not going to do crossing guard until a little bit later till they get there. We're going to go to Wendy, if you'll come up. I think you have a video that's going to be shown, and bring everybody up that needs to come up. This is a great day.
Yes, it is. Great day in agriculture. This is Farmer John William Revels, and he just finished planting about 400 acres of potato for us. And we're here to celebrate him today. We're not here to talk about all the challenges that agriculture has, with rotten seed coming in from Maine, and labor prices going up, and fertilizer prices going up, and potato prices staying the same. We're not here to talk about that today.
Don't make him depressed.
No, we're here to celebrate John receiving the This Farm Cares Award. I want to show y'all why. This is a three-minute video.
It's very important to have farmers like John William. We're not seeing the young farmer come back or stay on the farm or the ranch these days. And to have young farmers like John William continue that tradition, keep that farm going, and be a part of the community, give them back to the community through farming and producing a wholesome product, it's just important that we have a young farmer like John William staying on the farm and continuing that tradition.
John Revels with Crescent Lake Farms. We've been here for seven years. This is going into our eighth season. So, we grow table stock potatoes, we grow corn as a secondary crop in our off-season. My whole family has farmed for about 60 years. My grandfather farmed, my dad still farms at our home farm in Hastings with my little brother. So, we've come up with a few different things to help with our BMPs. Me and my father designed a fertilizer bander applicator to more precisely apply our fertilizer directly where we need it to keep it out of our irrigation ditches. It allows us to do a percentage less fertilizer usage on our dry and our liquid. We were the first ones to design the dry applicator machine, and water management got involved when they saw our design and thought it was great. Pretty much everyone uses a, the same kind of bander applicator. So, I'm most proud of being able to continue on, generation after generation. We've had to diversify within ourselves, grow in different crops and different types of ways, and just happy to be able to be a third generation, to be able to do that, and hopefully keep, keep going for my children.
John William Revels was selected because he does a great job at following BMPs. He's enrolled BMPs, he's helping preserve his family's farm for generations to come.
The heart of the BMP program is protecting and conserving water. We're concerned about leaching of nutrients as well as nutrients moving with erosion. If you're having high erosion, you're losing phosphorus from the field. If we have leaching rain events and they're over fertilizing, that leak can be leached into our groundwater, as well as we do a lot of offshore projects to retrofit old irrigation systems for more precision application of irrigation water, which is reducing their need for water.
So, we're trying to do the best thing for the land. You know, we'd like my children and my children's children to be able to still farm, and so we want to take care of the land, you know, keeping our fertilizer out of the river, and it's cost-effective, but also it's better for the environment. We're proud to be nominated for the Farm Cares Award this year. I'm actually the secretary for our division here in Putnam St. John's with Farm Bureau. Something that I have a passion in and devote a lot of time to.
So, as you can see, he's done a lot of work on his farm, and he's got a lot to pass on, and we're proud of him.
Do you want to say anything? No. Absolutely.
Everybody, do you want to fly it over?
Yeah. All right. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you. Thank you for saying it. Okay.
Wendy, Wendy, is there anything else you want to say?
Wendy, I want to say a couple of things. John Williams said he didn't want to speak, but he may. John Williams, when they, when they bought the Wasnawski Farms from the Frolics, they had a reputation to uphold of being good farmers, good stewards of the land, and good community members, and John Williams has stepped in and done that. You can see with his wife Emily and their three sons, he's a family man. He's one of the most grounded young men that I have met recently. He's about the same age as my oldest son, about 35, 36, and he's just a fine young man. And another thing, to come in and be part of a community, you have to give back, and he's done that. The Rotary Club in Crescent City started a fundraiser some 30 years ago, and we've had it at Wasnawski Farms, now Crescent Lake Farms, for about 20 of those years. John Williams allowed us to have it there after the sale. He found out what it was like, how we put the event on, who it benefited. Year, we raised about $25,000, and without John Williams' help, we would not have been able to do that. So, John Williams, I'm glad I've met you, do business with you, and know you, and you're one of the finest young men I've ever met, and you deserve this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Beautifully and well said. Next item is J.R. Grimes. He will come.
Good morning, Commissioners, administrative staff. Thank you for having us this morning. Today's one of those days that we really enjoy about our job, is we get to give recognition to the deserving ones, and not that they're not all deserving, but maybe these had rose to the top of a awards committee that was established a year ago. And so, just a little background on the awards committee. It was nominations from their peers to put them into places where they are. They submitted it, and their peers were able to decipher through several scenarios, pick out the best that they could, and deliver us a final product. We'd be remiss if we didn't mention the folks that participated in this committee that made this awards ceremony happen. It was led underneath the direction of Deputy Chief Clue Wright. Our voting members were Jean Morgante, Rob Flynn, Jenna Farmer, Kenneth Rust, Colleen Underwood. It was also Ms. Gee was present. She was there as not a voting member, but taking the notes and making sure everything was good. But without them, this would not happen. Thank you to all of our first responders out there every day. They do such a phenomenal job. I mean, it's day in and day out of the grind that they have to go through to make the day go around. A lot of times, it's unnoticed. Sometimes it is noticed. Today's one of those days that we get to recognize the fine men and women that serve our community every day. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Chief Wright to start handing out some awards.
Thank you, Director Grimes. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Commissioner, thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to come up here and present these awards. The first award we'd like to do is a firefighter of the year. Lieutenant Luke Kersey. Lieutenant Luke Kersey was nominated by his peers for the 2023 firefighter of the year. Nominee state Lieutenant Kersey has demonstrated discipline, preparedness, and foresight into his job in high stressful situations. He has overcome obstacles due to his preparedness and tactics. Lieutenant Kersey during high stressful situations has overcome and applies tactics to receive a clear outcome. And Lieutenant Kersey's sound leadership and commitment toward his crew is well received and respected, and Putnam County Fire Rescue should be proud to have an employee such as Lieutenant Kersey.
Luke, if you don't mind, return back up here. I would just like to say, because there's a particular incident in place, I'd like to accommodate Mr. Kersey for this morning. As a young line officer, it's not very often you get that call that is completely outside of the box, okay? I worked a call with him. If he wouldn't have took control and leadership of that call, being a young line lieutenant, he actually had a fire on an island, okay, that you cannot get a vehicle to. He led the charge in direction of a, on a fire on Hog Island, coming from, I think he came from Satsuma that morning. They have a boat inside their station, one of the first ones there, adapting and overcoming all of the challenges that that presented to them, right? Because, I mean, we got getting folks over there, we got getting equipment over there, and we were able to contain it. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, we had a loss of the home, but we were able to contain it to the property where it started. And if it wouldn't have been for fast actions of folks like Lieutenant Kersey making those decisions. And very well-deserving of the award. Thanks, sir.
Stay up there, we'll get a picture. There you stay. Okay. Next, we would like to recognize voluntary firefighter of the year, Roddewick Flynn. Roddewick Flynn is a volunteer firefighter, and he has responded to over 467 calls for service, more than any other volunteer in 2023. As a dedicated volunteer firefighter, he spends countless time and hours away from his family. Rod, as we call him, is the 2023 volunteer firefighter of the year, along with the most calls for any volunteer in the county.
If y'all would stay up here, we're going to do group pictures and then individual ones with the board and staff, okay?
Next, we would like to introduce the department employee of the year, David Blossman.
Think you brought your fan club with you. Good.
David Blossman was nominated by his peers for the 2023 for department employee of the year. Nominee state firefighter Blossman is the epitome of a paramedic. He goes above and beyond for his patients and shows true professionalism on every run. His commitment and professionalism as a paramedic should be followed by all employees, and Putnam County should be proud to have an employee such as him.
I'd like to say one thing about David. Not only does he do a great job, I've received multiple emails from citizens about how caring David is when they're in his care. I've also had two students send me emails talking about how well they want to come to work for Putnam County now because of David Blossman, and how he has shown them the ropes of Putnam County while they're being a student. So, I'd love to have 100 of them.
Your fan club will be invited later on. Up here, we'll take pictures, so don't worry about that. We're going to get to it.
Next, we would like to recognize the department achievement award, Captain Kenneth Rust. Captain Kenneth Rust was nominated by his peers for the 2023 department achievement award. Nominee state Captain Rust has dedicated his time organizing the 911 ceremonies while leading the Arniegar Team Recruitment and Retention Committee and being part of the peer support group. Captain Rust has performed a valuable service to Putnam County Fire Rescue for his superior service and dedication. Thank you. And next, we'd like to recognize the company officer of the year, Captain Katie Harper.
Is anybody on duty out there today? Or they seem to be all here today?
Captain Katie Harper was nominated by several of her peers for the 2023 company officer of the year. Nominee state Captain Harper has tremendous integrity, goes above and beyond to ensure training and duties are adequate. She takes pride in fundraiser events for the community outreach. Captain Harper always has a great work ethic and is very in tune to what her subordinates need, and is always encouraging them to train and get better. She is epitome of commitment and dedication within the Putnam County Fire Rescue Department. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you. We're going to bring the unit citation awards back. Some of the folks were on duty today that couldn't make it, so we're going to bring that back when they can actually attend the meeting. But thank you so much for your time, and I'd be remiss, we had a pen and ceremony four or five months back, and former chairman Turner says, "How come we all don't have uniforms like that?" Right? So, I would like to thank him and Mr. Suggs for your leadership, and was able, we were able last year to get all of our line officers the Class A dress uniform. That was the first time in Putnam County we were able to pull that off, and I would, we're going to continue it, so hopefully it was just one step to get us in a positive right direction. So, thank you guys for your leadership. They looked fantastic this morning.
They did.
So, but it's just part of being a professional organization, I think that they're very, very proud of. So, thank you so much for your time this morning, and congratulations to all the awards you took.
All right. So, we're going to come down there, the staff is, so somebody needs to direct who's coming first. So, we'd like to get a picture with the board and staff, and then we'd like to get a picture with the families, also of every individual. Then we'll do one big collective, or let's do the first one. Group first, okay?
Okay, yeah. Everybody hear the singing?
Yes, sir. Y'all, I don't look right.
Can you come to the end over here? Yeah, there you, there you go. Perfect. All right. Three, two, one. And then the individual family?
We bring the rest.
Hey, yeah. Hey, guys, bring all your firefighter personnel down now.
Everybody get back up.
You gotta squeeze it really close.
First responders, support staff. Okay, everybody in?
Three, two, one.
Clues, can we run that? Three pictures. Okay, you ready to go?
Really? I think I'm bossy. I don't know.
Wait, we're going to do you first, and then we'll do your team. We're going to do you first.
I'm going to do a long.
I was trying to.
Everybody in there? Oh, there's Mr. Suggs.
Three, two, one.
Now your family, okay?
And the balloons.
Get the balloons in the song.
That might have been fifty percent of the ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be easier.
Hey, Commissioners, we're going to have to stand in the back. It's gotten...
Those of you who want to stand in the back will do that.
I think the balloon's down a little bit.
All right.
I got what I need.
Good. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I appreciate you.
Wait, wait, wait.
All right. Three, two, one.
Did you embarrass him enough, or is there something else you want to do?
You can tell stories, but if we keep you here all morning.
Chief's trying to hide it. It's okay. Congratulations.
Wait, we got one more.
The altar?
Yeah.
All right. Three, two, one.
Good, thank you. Congratulations. All right. So, we're going to come down there, the staff is, so somebody needs to direct who's coming first. So, we'd like to get a picture with the board and staff, and then we'd like to get a picture with the families, also of every individual. Then we'll do one big collective, or let's do the first one. Group first, okay? Okay. Everybody hear the thing?
Would you rather stand down here by the door?
Y'all, I don't fit in. I don't look right.
Can you, can you come to the, the end over here?
Oh, she's carrying up there.
Yeah, there you, there you go. Perfect. All right. Three, two, one. All right. And then the individual family?
You get a picture with your mouth open.
We bring the rest.
Or we want?
Hey, yeah. Hey, guys, bring all your firefighter personnel down now.
All right, everybody get back up.
You got to squeeze it really close.
All firefighter and first responders, support staff.
There you go. No.
Okay, everybody in?
Three, two, one.
Please, give me one second. Three pictures. Okay, you ready to go ahead?
Really? Bossy, I don't know.
Wait, we're going to do you first, and then we'll do your team. We're going to do you first.
I'm going to do a long. Oh, yes.
I was trying to.
Yeah. All right. Three, two, one.
Did you embarrass them enough, or is there something else you want to do? Did you tell stories, or did we keep you here all morning?
Department Achievement.
I think his mother will always be there for you, right?
All right. All right. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. What am I supposed to do with this? I need, I need a stool or something. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you. Katie. Okay, I want to get Katie here.
Come on, come on.
I'm going to try.
You look so nice, don't you want to do?
That was a nice try, though. Something different. Three, two, one.
So, did you make it through all the smiles, sir?
He needed some room with him, my God.
Give the room a minute to clear out.
And thank you for the families that share your loved ones with us, and we'll be praying for you. We understand that the page goes off and they have to leave family, but we greatly appreciate it, and our citizens appreciate it. We're going to go out of our script here for just a moment. Crossing Guards are going to be here as soon as they can, so we're going to go into our nine o'clock Planning and Development Public Hearing. So, Zach, are you ready? Are you over there already? Wow, you are ready. Thank you. Zach, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, for the record. Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. I'm going to keep this brief. We've heard this once already. This is the second hearing for a rezone from commercial retail C2 to commercial retail C4. It includes two parcels in the county on Highway 17, north side of the county, just north of Bostwick area. The two parcels are highlighted here that you can see on the aerial. They're on the east side of the road. It encompasses ten and a, yeah, ten and a quarter acre. The imagery really paints the picture for us, so they're currently C2. You've got commercial on the north and the south side of the property, ag zoning around it. The land use, though, you can see is, is commercial in the immediate area and industrial. So, staff has recommended that the Board of County Commissioners adopts the rezone from C2 to C4, and we recommend approval for this request.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing now we're going to open it back up for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for this project? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, and you will be asked to keep your comments to at least three minutes, okay? Not at least, not over three minutes. If you'll put the microphone up to your mouth, you can move it right up.
My name's John Bruce. I live at Palm, at 96th, in Palm Coast, Florida. And I've been working with Mr. Carlton to get this rezoned. We want to be good partners to the county, so, and we're going to take care of everything and do everything properly we can, where we need to. So, we'd appreciate getting it rezoned.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is the applicant here? I meant to ask that question, and I didn't.
Chairman, that is the applicant's agent.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none, anybody wanted to speak in opposition of this, and seeing no one running up to the microphone, I will close the public portion of that. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of rezone REZ 23-000010.
I'll second that. Do we, we need to read the ordinance, don't we?
Out along.
It's on page 21 of the packet.
An ordinance of the Putnam Counties, of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County incorporated into Article 2 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, Ordinance 2005-18, rezoning a 10.26 plus or minus acre parcel of land from commercial retail C2 to commercial intensive C4, providing for severability and an effective date, case number REZ 23-000010.
A proper motion. Do we have a second?
I've already said.
We have a second from Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to, Zach, thank you for your time. Move on to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It's not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room on the backside and should be submitted prior to the meeting to Deputy Clerk, who sits at the right of the podium to my left, Ms. Ashley over there. Do we have some cards?
He has to leave early. This is on the new business, but he asked if he could go ahead and speak.
Okay. Okay. So, do we have any comments on agenda items? Then we'll close that part of the meeting. Well, I think we'll get to it pretty quick. And we'll go to consent. Is there Commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Adams. Zach, is there any items you'd like to pull?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
Item F.
Item F. Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Aye.
And I have none. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, G, and H.
Second.
Proper motion. We have proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Mr. Turner, you have item F.
Yes, I think Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Grimes, would like to comment on this issue this morning.
Mr. Grimes?
Thank you, Mr. Turner, for pulling this item. I just want to say thank you to our staff. This is a project that was put into an HMGP project following Hurricane Matthew, and the design of this project was $97,000 for just the design. So, that, I mean, in today's world, you can figure that the construction, this is going to be somewhere between 950 and a million dollars to change a culvert out underneath Hoover Road. I'd like to thank our staff for stepping up and going, "Whoa, we can do that in-house." So, our engineer and our survey crew are working together, and they're going to change this out for less money than what the county's match would be on the design. So, I would just like to thank our staff for looking at this as a, as a item that we can say, "Hey, we can save county and state and federal taxpayer dollars by saying that we can do this with our own in-house crews, with our own design." And that's why it is so great to have a PE here. Anything that we need to, he can stamp it, and we can, he can draw the plans. So, I'd like to publicly say thank you to Mr. Scott Knowles for bringing this up to our attention and moving this project forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, this is exactly how it's supposed to work, guys, that we find projects that we can do in-house now that we have our own full-blown engineer and our own in-house abilities to do some of these projects, and instead of spending a million dollars, we're going to end up spending very few dollars compared to it. So, this is the way it's supposed to work. It's taken us a while to get our engineer on board. Welcome to Scott, and that came over from Matthews, and, but I'm just saying that this is the way the system is actually supposed to work. Without Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item F.
Proper motion. Do we have a second? Proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Ms. Wilkinson, you have item A.
Thank you. This is our Dart de Paye project. Just a couple of questions. I know that previously we had not required our contractors to be FDOT certified. Is that correct? And what that does is that helps, again, a big cost savings, and it also gives us an option to use local vendors.
That's correct.
So, my one question is, who inspects the roads? I mean, who, who makes sure that the quality is what we're expecting?
Our field inspectors that we employ at Public Works.
Okay, so we have somebody specifically that does that and is trained to do that?
Yes, ma'am. It's, he's DOT qualified to do inspections of roads.
Okay. All right, that was my only question.
And I want to make a comment on this. The reason I asked for this to be added was, we were trying to work on a MSBU for paving for a area right down the road, Violet Lake Circle. We use numbers of 480, 500,000 per mile for paving a road. Well, the scribner's areas, era said 1.25, and the bid was for 178. I did not want the residents to think that we could pave a road for $178,000 for 1.25 miles when we were just telling them it was costing them. So, I appreciate Public Works fixing that, you know, because once these things see the light of day, people, their gospel at that time, and they're really not, not, it was just an era. But I was kind of excited sitting at my desk, trying to figure out how we could pave one mile, 1.25 miles for 178,000. I was getting excited, but it didn't happen that way. So, yes, Mr. Turner?
I think that it's important to note here that during, that the contract documents actually called for the contractors to go out and measure their sales, the length of the roads that were put in the contract document. So, the bidder actually picked up the length of the road as actual was, not what was in the document as a scribner error on our part.
Correct.
So, I think that's important to understand, that they actually bid the thing at the proper length because they went out and checked how long the road actually was.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for that clarification. So, this is just a good moving forward at this point. So, the Chair will entertain a motion on item I.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item I on our consent agenda.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. We will go down to new business. And Mr. Hafner, I know you've got to leave, correct?
I can take over a little while, yes.
Okay, all right. So, let's go to animal control and the neuter, portable trailer, Mr. Helms.
Good morning, people, my Board. So, I'm Brian Helms. I'm the Executive Director of Velma Services, so I'm kind of liaison with, working with the ARC. We've already brought this to you guys on the November 16th. The ARC is looking to acquire a USD grant, looking for $25,000 to do 25-plus spay and neuters. We came to you guys, sorry, they came to the Advisory Board, the Animal Control Advisory Board on the 16th. They had a vote of four to one in favor to support this. We came to you guys on 12/9. You guys requested the ARC and me kind of work together to finite the terms and what they were asking, and so we did that. That was also included in your packet. I have them here today, and they're here to answer any questions that you guys have. And so, we're, they're, again, still asking the same $25,000 for the USD grant match fund that they, that they're doing. So, so we'll present that to you, and I'll give it over to them.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Virginia Delgado Oakwood, Crescent City Kennel, 1952, South Highway 17 in Crescent City. Thank you so much for this opportunity, again, to talk to the Commissioners. Tomorrow is Valentine's Day, and this proposal is for the love of pause. Red is my favorite color, but also red represents urgency. Have we mentioned in the past animal welfare? I do see the light at the end of the tunnel with, hopefully, the new shelter being built this year, and with spay and neuter in this county, which is not offered, it will be a fantastic step to improve animal welfare. Briefly, I want to say that dog offspring, in six years, they can produce 67,000 puppies. Cats in seven years can produce 370,000 kittens. I have never had so many puppies at ARC Animal Rescue. Between Thanksgiving and New Year's, I had 26. And I have pulled several puppies from Animal Control. In fact, we had to convert our cat room into the nursery. I have a dog that was abandoned at Animal Control. She should have never been pregnant, probably eight or nine years old, had seven puppies. Four were stillborn. We had to go to veterinary care to induce her in order for her to survive, and it was a $500 bill. So, this spay and neuter is for Putnam County. It's the first step into improving animal control, animal services, and welfare. As you know, an all-alter male dog can attack and bite. We are the top three in the nation for Florida for dog bites. That's just one reason. Second reason, all the dogs that are loose can cause car accidents. We want Putnam County to be safe where all our residents can walk without being attacked by a herd of dogs, and it's just not one, a herd. There are three, three dogs that are loose still that Animal Control cannot capture in Crescent City. So, these are the reasons why we need the spay and neuter. It is for the county, not only for South Putnam, all the way over to Interlaken. We have proven ourselves of what we can do for this county. We did 560-plus vaccine, low-cost vaccines last year, and we provided in 2020 to 150 spay and neuter vouchers. Last year, we did 275, almost double. The need is here. We also have an opportunity to work with U.S. Veterinary School to have those students come to us, and like I mentioned in the proposal, as you received a copy, we are planning to go all the way to Interlaken. In fact, we are planning to do a low-cost clinic in Interlaken in March. I leave it open to all of you for any further questions or discussions.
Commissioner Turner has a question?
Yes, I have several, Ms. Oakwood. Thanks for coming again today. Who are you, who's going to actually work the trailer? Do you have a veterinarian that?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Okay, you have two that have obligated herself to work the trailer?
Yes.
Okay. Are you any closer to getting the grant at this time?
We are 95% getting that grant.
Okay.
And regardless if we do not, we have a Plan B, C, and D.
Okay, so, if the Commission were to see to give you the $25,000 you're requesting today for the services that you have, that you have offered, the, the, you would still need the $25,000 even if you didn't get the grant, or would you need the $25,000 contingent upon you getting the grant? How would that work?
Part two, contingency of the grant.
Okay, so, would that meet your criteria that, that you needed if we? Okay, so would that meet your criteria that, that you needed if we voted to give you the 25 contingent upon you getting the grant? That would meet your need?
Yes, sir. We're not asking for a check right now. We just need your support so we can submit it to USDA.
Well, I think it's very important in this situation for us to bring up that we're not just donating $25,000 of this, that they're actually offering services to the county for, for them, for the money. And some of those services are up to 70 procedures quarterly for a very nominal fee of 35 for a feline or 45 for a canine. They're actually offering to schedule low appointments for vaccinations and what have you, for rabies and what, it's on, it's in the packet.
Right.
I'm just trying to hit the highlights. But I just need the public to know that we're not just donating $25,000 to a nonprofit. What we're doing is we're, we're participating in the, in the project in order to get services from them that the county needs.
Thank you very much. Well spoken.
So, I just wanted to say that, Mr. Chairman.
Well put, Mr. Turner. Ms. Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Virginia, for bringing this forward. I'm a big animal advocate, if you don't know already. And these are the kind of partnerships we should be doing. We should be doing public-private partnerships, and that's the way I see this. It is not something that I want. It's something that is needed. We do not have a program currently in Putnam County, and you're right, I see on social media all the time, people going, here's my situation, or I'm trying to help my neighbor, or these dogs, this, that, and the other, and they're asking where they can go. And I am very appreciative that you are taking the lead and trying to bring this forward. And I'm very supportive of it. I do understand that nonprofits sometimes can do a much better job than government because they don't have near the red tape that the rest of us do. And I just want to say I'm in favor of it, and thank you again.
Thank you. I'm in tears. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. My light's not working right now, so I'm looking down. Mr. Pickens, you're next.
Yes, Diane, and Julie, thank you for coming again, and thank you for your efforts. In our first conversation, and I think my conversation with you yesterday afternoon, was I was concerned about perception of the, of the public of just donating $25,000. So, there need to be deliverables, which you have explained. The sustainability of the program is also a concern, but you seem to be very confident that you have an A, B, and C, and maybe even a D plan.
Yes, sir.
For this to continue. And then also, I mentioned definitely in our first meeting, it has to be mobile. It has to reach all ends of the county because somebody that really can't afford to, they may not have transportation to take an animal, you know, 45 minutes, hour across the county to come down to South Putnam from Interlaken or Melrose, you know, to have the services provided. So, anyway, if for some reason, God forbid, that you don't get the grant, I guess this money would come back to the county?
We're not asking for money. We're asking for a-
Just the pledge?
Just the letter stating of your support.
Okay.
When we get the grant, that, excuse me, that document will be submitted to the USDA. And then, when the grant is provided to us, then we'll make arrangements and follow the criteria for the USDA. Because remember, the trailer also has to be ordered. It's brand-new.
Okay, and if it takes as long to get a trailer as it does a fire, excuse me, ambulance?
No, no, sir. No, sir.
Thirty-five months, I think is what JR said. Okay, so if this goes forward and you receive the trailer, are there any other expenditures or expenses that you foresee to equip this trailer? Does it come ready to go?
It comes ready to go.
Or do you have, do you have that taken care of?
It comes ready to go. Vaccines are ready in our refrigerator. We also have a vaccine clinic with a stainless steel equipment, anesthesia, IV poles, you name it, we got it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say I really appreciate you bringing this back to us because the initial iteration wasn't as clear. This is very clear. I support it 100%. I think it's a great idea. It's something that's absolutely needed in the west side of Putnam and throughout Putnam. But we see just a lot of, and I'm sure we do throughout the county, but in West Putnam, there's dogs that come through my property, that come through everyone's property in my neighborhood, and we need to start doing something proactive, and this is a proactive measure that I really appreciate and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have a few comments. I do appreciate you bringing this back. This isn't an ask. It's a partnership, in my view, and it's badly needed in our county. I would hope we never needed it. I would hope that we have responsible pet owners that take care of it. Some people are, and they just fall on, fell on hard times, and they can't afford it. I fully understand that. I also like the idea that, I'm sure that you wouldn't mind, that if people wanted to adopt a spade or a neuter for whatever price, I'm sure they could contact you and, and put some money in the bank to help set that situation.
Yes.
I could see some fundraisers that I would be involved in, that-
Thank you.
We would do something into that nature. Because again, I know people fall on hard times. And, you know, some of the calls I get is, I have six dogs. My girlfriend left me, left me with her dogs. What do I do now? I don't know the answer. I mean, I don't. I'm sorry that that happened to you. I love to be a pet owner. I'm currently not.
Ooh, I have many, many, many-
No, I'm not. No, no. I had the best-
Should have told her that.
I have the-
Eight puppies, a loving dog.
I love on other people's labs, not mine anymore, but I had the best dog in the world. And to, at my age, I think about, you know, do I really want to go back down that road and, and face the heartbreak that I had to face with mine? And I don't like that feeling. So, I love on others right now, and I'll support others. But I truly, I believe this is a wonderful partnership, and we, I think this board is going to go ahead and do what you've asked us to do. So, is there any more comments you'd like to make, or?
I want to add that this afternoon at 4:30, I will be presenting, I'm also an educator, with Ms. Dia, our board member, to the Putnam County School Board on pet responsibility and spade and neuter for educational curriculum.
Very good.
Good.
And so, this is the beginning. I envision like Jacksonville, Rick's vision, he started tiny, and he has a probably 10,000-square-foot clinic in spade and neuter. And I am determined to have that for Putnam County.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am most ready for a motion, Commissioner.
Okay, I move that we approve the $25,000 commitment upon them receiving their grant.
Second.
A proper motion. We have a proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign at pass. Can anyone else please? Thank you very much-
Thank you.
-for what you did there.
(applause)
Brought tears to my eyes. So, thank you. Next item is our planning and development, RFQ for Putnam County Impact Studies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning Development Services. So, we're here today. We're really looking for ultimately direction, but favorably an approval on moving forward with the RFQ 2326, which would be an impact fee feasibility study. I've kind of prepared some stuff. I don't know if you have questions first, or if you want me to go through kind of my line items that I prepared.
Go ahead and prepare for what you-
Okay, so, in year 2023, the Putnam County Building Department reviewed 408 residential permits. That was broken into 187 site-built, 215 mobile homes, six Florida Building Code compliant modular homes. In addition to that, we also reviewed 18 commercial permits. Those ranged from retail, industrial, services, institutional, and recreational. The missed out impact fees, and I'm going based off of the city of Palacca's recently approved impact fees, so using their impact fees for Putnam County. So, there is a difference in price here. But from the residential permits, we could have collected $2.19 million that would have been used as an investment into the county's infrastructure that we currently have, as well as set aside for new developments, new drainage, new roads, what have you. In addition to that, there was also different commercial fees, and I didn't calculate what all of the commercial permits would have equated to. The reason why is they're based off of the use and the square footage. So, I would have had to broken everyone down and done the calculations, and it's just not something that I can quickly do. But I did look at a variety retail store that would be 10,580 square feet. That would have been $24,000.
Wonder what that would be.
A retail parts store at 6,400 square feet, $18,000. CertainTeed, 313,000 square feet expansion, $116,000. And a standard self-storage, drive-up, put-your-stuff-in-a-box, $7, $7,700. Again, those values were based off of city of Palacca's recently passed. It comes out to be $5,374 on a residential permit. And again, it would vary on commercial based off the use and size. When we had impact fees last in 2008, the impact fee was around $7,700 for a single-family home. So, it could be less than what we recently had. The scope of our impact fee study would include outright transportation, parks, and recreation, water, wastewater, fire rescue. The cost for that feasibility study is $161,562. So, that's the minimum that we're asking for. We also had the, the company we've kind of been in communication with, which is Benesh out of Tampa, very great multidisciplinary firm that's done a lot of work in northeast Florida. We asked them if they could also provide us a budget for law enforcement. If we chose to include that on the scope, that would be $18,200. And then also schools, which would be $40,300. So, we have a range here. It could be anywhere between 161 and some change, up to 220,146. That would be a, but a minor investment into the county's sustainability of our infrastructure, the well-being of our citizens, and the improvements of equality of life for the citizens as well. So, that's my spiel. That's what we're asking for. And I hope that, hope that we can kind of make an agreeance here today.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Turner, you have the floor.
The rules when you implement impact fees, let me make a spiel before we go there. I've, for many, many years, been absolutely against impact fees unless you're going to use that money for the impact and not just put it in the county coffers and continually spending it over things that would have been spent on otherwise. Now, I understand that from talking to Ms. Young, that it was set up previously, and it will be set up again, that each line item that the Commission decides to, to charge an impact fee on, that that would be isolated to be used for that type of work. So, in other words, if they charge money for transportation impact fee, they can't take that and just stick it in the general fund and use it for overall transportation. It has to be transportation-related. I want to see if we can even get some of these down a little more, a little finer to where you can't, if, if somebody builds a subdivision in East Palacca, for instance, that the, that the transportation infrastructure impact fee portion of that would be used on, first, on the impact that they create. And so, you wouldn't take an impact fee from an East Palacca subdivision and use it in Melrose to fix a problem in Melrose. I understand Melrose got to be fixed, but that's not what they're impacting in East Palacca. Now, you can say the, the Melrose has the subdivision, it would be the same thing. You couldn't use Melrose's impact fee for East Palacca. It needs to be used to offset the impact fee in the area. Is there any way that, is there any way that we can do this impact fee legally in-house? Okay. So, do we have to do an impact study on every single category?
Wait a minute.
Sorry. You, you can, but you don't want to because it has to be defensible against the lawsuit on the methodology. So-
Okay.
Most counties that I've worked with always have somebody that will not just provide the methodology, but be willing to defend it in court should it come to that.
That's good enough for me. The answer is basically no. So, that's the legal interpretation for no. You can't do that.
That's as short as he could get it, too.
Okay, so do we have to do an impact fee study on every particular line item on this list? I know that you already went back to Besch and, or Benesh, or whatever they're called, and said and asked them, was there any wiggle room for the $163,000? And they said, no. If you do every impact line item, it takes the same amount of work. You just, there's no way to do this job and do it less money because, to make it defensible. And so, do we have to do every single line item that they put in here, transportation parks, water, wastewater, fire rescue, general government buildings, technical reporting? Do we have to do every one of those line items to make this defensible if we, even if we're not intending to do an impact fee? And I'm not saying we are not, but just say, for instance, pick one, general government buildings. If we didn't want to do an impact fee to, to charge residential people for general, general government buildings, would we have to pay that $15,000 to have that line item studied? Is that part of the deal?
No, sir. You don't have to. The, the concept behind the study is to give you the options to bring back and determine which impact fees you would like to assess for the purposes. So, if you don't study it, and then you determine a need, you don't have a way to do the impact fee implementation.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is, is because if, if the board, and I'm, like I said, I'm not picking on any certain one. I'm just picking one. But if, if the board made a decision that they were interested in an impact fee, but only on certain items, like maybe transportation, I'm just picking them, transportation, utilities, things that are direct, absolute direct impact, but not just trying to throw in the kitchen sink such as general government building impact fee, I really don't see personally, and this may just be me, but I don't see personally how you building a house out somewhere in the county is going to be a general impact on one of our general government buildings around here.
Well, I'm not, I'm not for or against. I'm taking board direction. But remember, the concept that this board is taking is this is not about one more house. This is about 500 more houses.
I understand.
And if we end up with 500 more houses, then yes, we end up needing to service a population much bigger than what we have today.
That's exactly what my next question was going to be. Can we, if this is a single-family residence, not part of a subdivision at this time, could we exempt that single-family residence, first-time buyer-type thing, could we exempt them from impact fees? And it only be for subdivisions and for commercial and for, and, and again, commercial. I'm not, I'm not so sure. I don't think impact, this is just me speaking, but I don't think impact fees should be a cash cow or money-raising thing. They should be offsetting actual impacts that you have. I have a hard time getting the CertainTeed one that he came up with a minute ago. The, the impact fee for CertainTeed would have been $313,000. What additional services would be there to offset them? And then CertainTeed doesn't come here anymore. They go to one of their other plants. So, we don't get, we're giving these people incentives to come in here and, and be part of the community, and, and now we're going to give them an incentive and then charge them $313,000 on the other side of it? I don't know that that's good for economic development in any way, shape, or form. But I'm not saying that I'm against impact fees, especially, I'm sorry for rambling on, Mr. Chairman.
You're fine. You're fine.
But my, my trigger for impact fees was when the big boys started showing up. The people who wanted four, 500 house subdivisions, 300 house subdivisions, they're here. I'm telling you, they're here. I don't know that I'm at liberty to say on TV, but I'm telling you, they are here. And so, it's time to have an impact fee. It is. But I don't think we just need to use it as a money-raising venture across the board. where we're not really offsetting true impacts. All we're doing is just trying to raise more money to spend on all these items, even if it's necessary or not. So that's why I think we need to go down this list and maybe decide, if we're able to, to decide what things on the list that we're actually thinking about doing an impact fee on. And then if we don't have to, if we don't have to, one of them here is technical report and ordinance, task three, $35,000. Do we want, okay? Do we need to do that?
Yes, the ordinance.
Right. So all of this is intended to offset costs. None of this is meant to be generating money to put in a fund somewhere that's never going to be used. To answer your first question on could you exempt out like the one-off, single-family home, I think you're going to run into a problem where when you apply impact fees, you're looking to apply them fairly to anyone in the same situation. So there are some counties that have provided some, I think of them like a rebate exemption for affordable housing. That's the only type way I've seen come off the impact fees. But candidly, I don't know what the recommendation's going to come after the analysis, but 7,000 or 8,000 is the lowest you're going to find in any of our surrounding counties. So I mean, some of them are, I think Clay was over 18,000. I heard St. John's County was right at 30,000. And that's for every home coming in. That's how they analyze what the infrastructure impact's going to be to them. So I think what you're saying is 100% right, that this is meant to actually be a direct offset for services that we're going to have to actually put into place.
And that's the reason why I'm not fighting drastically against impact fees, which I have for the last, since they were implemented in '05 or '06 or whenever they were implemented. I think they were gone, done away with in '08. But the point being is that if we went down this list, if we postponed this until the workshop next week, and I know Mr. Chairman's workshop is really full, but if we postpone this until the workshop next week where we could try and study this list and figure out things that we were interested in doing and not interested in doing, then maybe, for instance, we wouldn't have to put in there if we weren't interested in doing an impact fee to cover general government buildings, for instance, around town. Or, I don't know, meetings and presentations. Do we want an impact fee to cover our meetings and presentations? I mean, I'm just saying that.
Commissioner Turner, maybe, it may be prudent for you guys to take some additional time to have more consideration. I do not see a large impact in the cost of the study if we start lineiting things today. What will be back before the board, once the analysis and study is complete, the decisions for the board to make as to which impact fees and things will be funded from them. It won't be a matter that you guys get to determine the level of funding, right? They're going to tell you, in order for you to sustain operations of transportation, the impact over the next several years is going to be X. And you guys are then going to be able to determine, do you want to engage in that? You are not going to see a large chunk of money come off or reduce the cost of the study because they've got to study every parcel regardless of whether or not they're studying it for five different areas or two. That work still has to be done. Now, we can take some more time and have any deliberation you want to, but I do not, we did have some conversation about taking one off and adding one and all of that. And frankly, it made a nominal change. It actually made it, it was kind of counterintuitive, but we added one.
That's the answer I was looking for. Basically, it wouldn't save us any money if we did it.
So we added a discipline and it actually took the base fee down, which, again, counterintuitive, I understand. So you're not changing the actual cost of what it's going to cost this professional. It doesn't change the number of hours they've got to put in the matrix, right?
How did we find Benish? Did we do an RFQ?
We did an RFQ and they responded.
Okay. I understand.
Chairman, can I add something real quick to? The sheet, Commissioner Turner, that you were referencing is the budgetary breakdown for the entire project. So we would not be collecting an impact fee for meetings and presentations or technical reports and ordinances. Those are components within this process that we would be billed for.
I understand. Okay. So we put out an RFQ and these were the only people that responded?
We did only have one respond. That's correct.
Are these the only people that do this or just only people that were interested? Or is it like what happens to Putnam County from time to time that we put something in there that kept other people from being responsive to this RFQ? Or do you know that answer?
I do not believe there was anything materially wrong with the document. In fact, we provided, we received it with some guidance from other counties who had successful participation. So it was not something done independent or outside of some guidance. That being said, we did have a number invited. We just didn't have a number of people that wanted to show up to do the study at this time.
Okay. One last comment. I know that there's another county that doesn't charge impact fees on single-family residences outside of a subdivision. I found that in my research. And so I don't know if it's still legal or not, but I know one other's doing it. So.
And we could certainly have the consultant look at the options and present them to the board. That's what this first step is.
One of the biggest things I've been against impact fees all this time for a small first-time, for a small home on a first-time buyer, and you say impact fees on trailers and what have you. I know that everybody hates trailers because they don't pay enough taxes or whatever. I had to live in one one time because I couldn't get no better. It's the best I could do at the time. I don't live in one now, but I lived in one at one time. And having an impact fee on that trailer at that time would have prevented me from even being able to live in the trailer. So I understand the theory that everybody lives in a nice house, wants trailers to go away altogether. But the reality of that is some people either live there or they can go out to Houdal and stay in a damn tent. That's their two options. So I think we need to make sure as best we can, when we implement these impact fees, that we do it for the right reasons and not against the people that we're going to prevent from having somewhere to lay their head at night because they can't pay an impact fee. I'm almost certain that an impact fee is not, cannot be included in a mortgage. So you've just included more of a down payment for somebody that's trying to build a small first-time home or whatever, if that turns out to be the case. I know that a house that I'm building right now, they would not include, in St. John's County, they would not include the $26,000 impact fee on that house. The people had to write the check. Well, thank goodness they could. A lot of people, that's going to prevent them from being able to get a first-time home. So I just think we need to be mindful of that section of our citizenship when we're implementing these impact fees, is we need to make sure that we're not putting somebody or making it where somebody cannot have a first-time home, cannot live in a mobile home because our impact fee is too high, cannot, and they got to go live in a tent out of Houdal. I'm just saying, we need to be mindful of that when we go through this process. It's not just about raising money. There needs to be some compassion in these impact fees, too. That's it.
There, I agree. Thank you. Mr. Adams, Zach, you're next.
Yeah, I agree with 90% of what you just said. As far as the law enforcement portion, I'd like to see that added to it. And I agree with delaying it just to let us get our minds around it and possibly to reach out to the school board and the superintendent about if they wanted to participate because it may be a cost savings to them, if they could come up with their portion to do that. I know there was some talk during some of their meetings of their talking about doing impact fees. I'd be all for letting them tag on at that 40,000 if they wanted to. And that's all I wanted to say, is I think that, give them the opportunity to say whether they want to participate at that price. And I think we should include law enforcement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners, for all your comment. So Julian, what you're saying is if we were to take some of this out, it's not going to reduce the cost that much. So I guess the time at when this study comes back, that would be the time to add or include or not include these items. Okay? Let me ask you.
It's also going to take 18 to 24 months to get this done. So it's a very long process that has to be done. That was their estimate that they gave us.
Okay. Because I saw that if we didn't move forward something today, that it would definitely not, if we had to send it back out for RFQ, that it would not be on the 2025 tax roll if we decided to do that. It's not going to make it anyway. Okay. So this board, I won't go there, but, okay, what if you had the, had the whole study done, okay, and re-removed the general government buildings? Didn't have it in there at all. Year five, we decided, this board decided that they wanted to put that back in. Would you have to have another study? Or would the cause, is there a certain time period that this study is relevant and to be able to be implemented, taken out, put in? You see what I'm talking about?
So if the study's completed and we adopt the ordinance to collect the impact fees, any changes or deviations to the assessments that we're collecting would require another study?
So why couldn't we use?
So if we take it away, then no, no study's required. But if you omit government buildings now and then in three years you decide you'd like to collect for government buildings, and we got to go back to the RFQ process, another study?
Right.
But just on government buildings?
Any facet.
Any of the portions you could back in. So if you foresee that you, whoa, this, we are really growing, that you could do that in the future? Okay. All right. I definitely agree that if we could take some time to study this a little bit more and maybe have it at the end of that workshop, Mr. Chairman. If not, definitely by the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkinson?
I'm really not for postponing it. It's already an 18 to 24-month process. To me, it's pretty cut and dry. We are not making the decision as to what impact we're, fee we're going to collect or not collect. All we're doing is asking for the study to be done. And I'm not so sure I'm with the school district getting the, you know, us paying the 40,000 or even partnering with them. It sounded like from some of their meetings, they were doing their own impact fee study. But we could have the discussion. But I'm certainly would be good with having the one for the additional $18,227 for the law enforcement. That seems reasonable. My point is, when we, when it came around for budget time, we couldn't even discuss impact fees because we didn't have a feasibility study. And so now, we asked for, this board asked for this feasibility study to move forward. And I just don't like the idea that we're kicking it down the road or waiting a couple more weeks and then you got to put it on another agenda. And so now we're another month out. And what's the purpose? We already know that if we take something off the list, we're not going to save any money. So what's the purpose? Just get the study done. Let's be efficient. Get it done. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Mr. Turner?
Yes. When the impact fees were implemented before and then there was a moratorium on those, on that, there was an impact fee study done at that time. So does that mean that we, ever so many years, if we implement impact fees, we have to do a new study along the way and the one that we have in place right now is not valid? It's not, we can't use the one that's already, the fee schedule that's already in place, which is actually higher than the one Zach just calculated or by his calculations, that actually the impact fee back then was even higher? So are we saying we can't use that one?
No. You need to base it off of current market conditions and cost of services. Now, traditionally, the economy, even if you see slight dips from time to time, will continue to increase. So if you remain on an old methodology, then you're just not keeping in track with what the costs are.
I have a few questions. So along those lines, when you do this study, and I do agree with Commissioner Turner, we need to identify the list first. I think we have, but hone in on that before we go much further. But Rich, what happens? Or what happens when we pass an impact fee and then we need to change it to go up? I heard going down, it's not a problem. But if we have to increase, what happens then? Do we have to go get a new study? Or does that study last for three years or four years? Or what's that purpose at that point?
If your costs increase, you need a new methodology to support why and how you're apportioning the fees.
Just for that one section of that fee? Let's say that we see fire or law enforcement?
Right. I mean, we just have to see what that is. You can't predict where you're going to see fees go up, or even if they would.
Well, I want to say this. I've been against impact fees since I got here, but I do understand that times are changing. Homestead exemptions are continually going up and we're throwing people out of the pot, the taxpayers. We're also seeing there's a big push right now to get rid of the ad valorem taxes in the state. And I don't know how in the world we would ever develop a budget without that. You'd have to have a sales tax of double digits to make that work. So I don't, I think we still, we got to start somewhere. And I support us looking at this study, identifying the list, and I think we can move forward. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the Putnam County impact fee study.
You have a proper motion?
Are you including the law enforcement?
With the, I'm including law enforcement, but not school board.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. We have a proper motion, proper second.
I didn't hear the last part of that motion, but not the school board?
Not the school board.
Not the school board, including law enforcement.
But not school board. That's $40,000 savings.
Under discussion.
We have discussion now. Mr. Turner?
Are we going to offer the school board would have the opportunity to be included in our study if they paid their own $40,000? Because I don't know that it'll be valid otherwise. I know before that the study earlier had school board, it had all kinds of different things in one impact fee. So I don't, would that, well, when y'all get done talking, I'll ask my question.
It's at the board's direction.
I'm happy. So we don't have to have, is it required? The question is, is it required?
It is not required.
So we don't have to include the school board? So would we allow them to piggyback with us? That's what I'm asking the Commissioners. I'm sorry, I'm looking down at y'all.
I don't necessarily.
I was going to, that was going to be why I had it for discussion, is I think we should give them the option because if they go out on their own, it might be $100,000 just to do the school board and it could save them $60,000. I don't think we should pay it at all.
Exactly.
As a commission. But if they wanted to jump in and fund that 40,327, I don't see why we wouldn't make that available to them. Now, I guess my question, Rich, to you would be, or to Julianne, since you've been the one talking to them, would, if we approve this today without the school board, could we add the school board in at that 40,000 three weeks from now? If the school board came back to you guys after having that conversation with them that, yeah, we want to jump on that? Or does that, we can't change it after today?
Well, technically, we can because you don't have a contract in front of you. So we would bring a contract back for the final number with a budget amendment because you don't have that in front of you either. Because we were seeking board direction today. So yes, if that is the direction of the board, we would preach out. And if the school board would like to participate, then we would bring back a final contract and budget resolution to properly fund and execute.
And I'm good with that. That's why I didn't want to continue to push this down the road because we still got to bring the contract back. And then we got, I mean, it's just, I mean, we all, this board has been really good about trying to create efficiencies. And this is one of those cases that studying on this, I mean, we've had this board package. I mean, I read it. It's pretty cut and dry to me. And so we're not making the decision today whether we're doing impact fees. We're not making the decision as to what we're going to do or not do. We're getting the cart before the horse. Just, we just need to get the impact fee done and study done, and then after that, we'll make other decisions. I don't disagree with a lot of Commissioner Turner's discussion earlier, but that's the discussion we have once we get the impact fee study back. So my, I amend my motion to say that we could, if the school board wanted to come on board and pay their share, I would be fine with that.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens, did you have a comment?
Yeah. With the share, if we funding, do we fund that? Do they fund that? Do we fund that? Okay. So. So, didn't know if, I don't know if he had any extra money.
We can ask him if he has it in his budget.
He left, he jetted once he heard law enforcement.
Right.
Timing's everything.
Okay, so if I understood, we're going to allow the school board to make a decision soon whether they want to piggyback on this at their cost. All right, best case scenario, we voted today, school board said something by the end of the month, best case scenario, this study comes back to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. What's a timeframe? You still holding to?
Can we get that, can we get the contractor to give us a best case scenario instead of staff trying to tell you what that firm might can produce?
That would be great.
All right. A proper motion. Mr. Turner, you have a comment?
One last comment. I know that it's easy to say that we're not, that we're not making the decision today on impact fees, or we're not doing any of that, but this Commissioner, if we're going to spend a hundred eighty thousand dollars today, then I think we need to be pretty serious, that we're thinking pretty hard about doing impact fees, or we're wasting a hundred eighty thousand dollars taxpayers' money. Now, I didn't say that I'm against impact fees, no way in shape. I just think they need to be tailored to where they're really needed and not hurting people while we're doing it. That's the only thing I'm trying to come up with here. But if we go forward today, Ms. Wilkinson wants to go forward today, I'll go along with her today. I'll vote for it, and we'll go along, and we'll get it done. But that, but that means that I am interested in impact fees at some point, but I am not interested in going on the record today. And if it happens after I'm not here anymore, I hope whoever wins will use the common sense that they shouldn't use impact fees to keep people from owning a home in this county.
I agree with that.
I agree. All right, we have proper motion, it's been amended, it's been seconded, the amended part. Has there any more discussion on the motion? Everybody understands the motion? All right, so seeing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it, unanimous. We're going to take a two-minute break.
We have a weekend before Christmas. We have a Christmas parade. And this year, we had over 175 golf carts. And we go road to road, you know, down the cul-de-sacs and stuff. It's all done, you know, we all by all those traffic rules. We all got bikes and everything. We decorate the carts up and we hand out candy. A lot of people would come down their, you know, set it at the edge of their driveway when we give out candy to all the kids. And we all gather at Georgia Boys. I mean, that's where the parade ends. And we have a good time. And we also do a New Year's Eve thing they've sponsored, which she would like to talk to y'all, too. But we would really like for all of us, you know, be legal and get this established and where we can do, you know, fundraisers and pick up trash on the side of the road. We'd all carry bags and do that and just be a one big family, you know, and help out in the community. If we got some, somebody in our neighborhood or something needs help with, you know, with hospital bills or something, we can have a, you know, fundraiser or something. But we would surely appreciate it and we all want to be legal and do things right and not give the Sheriff's Department no reason for us to get in trouble. So we appreciate it. And we got a map area here. We'd like to see if we could get it from the top of the hill in San Mateo to the Dunn's Creek Bridge. But I got a map area here. I wasn't sure if we could do it that far.
Keith, not to interrupt or anything, but I think the way we're going to have to do this is we're going to have to, if I can get the commission to go along with it, we're going to have to find out what the rules are in what areas.
Yes, sir.
There's a set of rules that you have to go by to have a golf cart community.
Okay.
So I don't want you to think I'm putting you off.
No, sir. I appreciate it.
But there's a certain way we're going to have to go about this. And I think the first step is going to be to have probably Public Works do a little study in the area and find out because like I've told you previously, I don't know and I just don't know if we can, can have 17, Highway 17 South in the golf cart community. I don't know that we can.
I'll tell you now, you can't.
So it may be that we have to, I know that you want your, the community to be on the, the right side going down south or headed south. And they also want one on the left side over in that area. So it may have to be two of them because I'm pretty sure that you can't cross a four-lane state highway with a golf cart. And so it may have to be two, two different communities. And I don't know that we'll have a, a way to get you from over where you live, was it not Inverness, uh, what's the name of the road?
Yeah, um, you're talking about, um...
Over there on the right going down.
Old San Mateo?
Those are on the other side.
Islander.
Islander, that's the road.
We live on both sides of Island.
Didn't come to me, but on, there's, could be one on the Islander side and then maybe another one on the other side, you know, in that area. But those are the type of things that we're going to have to ask somebody to research. And that was what I was going to try to do today.
Yes, sir.
If I could get the commission to go along with me that we could authorize, uh, D O, or authorize Public Works to take a look at it and then find out what areas in there would, would work for a golf cart community.
Yes, sir.
Keith, I think the boss just showed up.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something quickly?
You'll have to give your name and address.
There is a road that goes under the bridge, Dunn's Creek Bridge?
I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie Harp.
Good.
I'm the wife.
I get it.
And I live at the same address, 114 Nassau Avenue. I thought I'd state that. We do have a way to get to the other side safely, but there's a little work that needs to be done on the side of the bridge, but they just put that new walkway.
It's not about that. It's about state statute.
Okay.
And so there, there are some issues that have to be overcome.
Okay. Because we can, the police actually told us we could go around that way, up around under the bridge. I didn't know if that was possible. You could just, when they do the study.
Yeah, but I don't think you're going to be able to use the bike path either. And that's part of the bike path, I believe.
Of the bike path, yeah.
So I don't believe DOT is going to let you use that either.
All righty. Um, I'd like, um...
Mr. Keith, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes.
Would you like to speak? Well, seeing how we're just trying to move forward.
Yeah, it's not going to take a while.
Y'all are welcome to come up and speak, every one of you. But all we're trying to do today is just move it forward to the study stage to see what we can get done. And, and, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Susan Mallon. This is my husband, Michael. We live at 230 Butler Drive. We also own Georgia Boys Fish Camp, which is at the end of Butler Drive, at 217 Butler Drive. The reason that they asked me to come this morning is the majority of our neighbors that live in our community own either golf carts or side-by-side vehicles, mostly all senior citizens, which all of us abide by the law. A lot of my customers that come to Georgia Boys to buy their bait, tackle, and supplies come by golf cart every day. Every day, I must have at least 20 to 30 golf carts pull onto my property to purchase something for me. It's so much easier to grab the golf cart than to get in the car or the truck, especially when you live a canal away. We support the golf cart community. Twice a year, I hold a big party on Valentine's Day. No, today, tomorrow is Valentine's Day. On the Fourth of July, we hold a huge party. I probably have 150 golf carts on my property on that day. On New Year's Eve, we host a huge party. And they also have a golf cart parade on that day. Last year, this past year, we had, I believe, over 175 golf carts rolling through my property. They're slow. Nobody drives crazy. They respect the law. They respect the neighbors. And I just want to say that we're, Georgia Boys is 100% behind a golf cart community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you.
So I guess today, Mr. Chairman, what I mainly want to try to ask for is can we move forward with looking at it and, and see if it would work out and if the rules would allow it and, you know, those sort of, what areas we could include? Because I'm almost certain we can, we can't make 17 any part of it whatsoever, not to cross it, not to anything. And so...
What do you need? A wave and support from this board?
I don't know. I'll need legal, I'll need legal to help me with that. If they give me a wave of support, can we look at it and have Public Works look at it to see if it would fit and how it would fit and maybe...
Yes, you can. And the statute changed July last year. So anybody who's interested, start, start with the statute as far as what the new rules are.
That's right.
Okay.
Commissioners, wave and support. Everybody agreement?
I'm in agreement.
Got five, five yes. Thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate it.
What they, what that means is we're going to move forward to see what we can do and what we can include and what the rules are and what have you, because I just don't know yet. But it, this is a positive first step, guys.
And if you need to read Florida Statute 316.212, Golf Cart Community, okay?
Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Right there.
Okay, next on our agenda is Commissioner Wilkinson, Memorial Bridge. Mr. Hafner?
He just walked out.
Did he really?
He did.
Okay. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you.
See, this is going to take a while. Can we go on with Thomas where he can leave? Or go in and get, he's got one...
Do you mind if we go to fine reduction and come back?
Up to you, Commissioner.
Let's do the fine reduction real quick and we'll be right back to that. Thomas, come on up. Code's case number 2008 dash 00825.
Just ask us, anybody here?
Is anybody, the applicant here today?
I don't know, sir.
No? Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Public, ask for public comment.
Yeah, public comment on this, for or against on case number 2008 dash 00825? The information's in your packet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr., Mr.?
This case is in compliance at this time, and I move that we reduce the fine to $1,552 if paid within 180 days.
Second.
Okay. We have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Sure.
Now he doesn't have to sit here.
Yes, sir. I think we have a person that would like to speak if we, if I can.
You have the floor.
Can we ask him to speak first?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Hafner, Jerry Hafner, would you like to speak before I get started? Or do you want to?
Can you mean on your phone?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Jerry Hafner, 122 Hillty Lane in East Palatka, speaking for myself and a lot of other folks I know and also the Revitalized Historic Palatka. Ms. Wilkinson made a presentation to the City Commission a couple of months ago concerning a bridge lighting project. Everyone I've talked to, including my, my committee and all the things we're trying to accomplish in downtown, pretty much support what she is going to be presenting to you today. I don't think they've actually heard the presentation. But anyway, we support it. We would like to see the County Commission support it. We think it will, it will add some delight to downtown. It really will. I think it will encourage visitors to come here more. It will encourage visitors to come to Putnam County more if we start acting like we're part of an educated community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Hafner. Okay, Ms. Wilkinson, you still have the floor?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to bring up this Memorial Bridge Lighting Project. Hopefully, we can get some movement on it today. As you know, the governor recently approved the Florida Department of Transportation's five-year work plan. Included in that work plan was up to $16 million for the Palatka Memorial Bridge Lighting Project. This capital investment project is for new dynamic, state-of-the-art color-changing LED lights allowing for special lighting displays similar to what you see on some of the bridges in Jacksonville. In addition, there's a safety component to the new lighting project. Underbridge lighting adds to safety and functionality of the bridge for pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and boaters. I think we can all agree that a well-lit bridge is definitely more secure for everyone. The fact that the state is willing to invest this much money into our county, to me, is, it's, it's wonderful because we didn't initiate this. This was an FDOT project. They brought it to us. And so while we were a little bit surprised that this was in the work plan, I, I still think that it's something that we definitely should consider. Incorporating the LED bridge lighting into our community is beneficial. Some of the highlights moving forward with the project is that it will make the bridge look unique and attractive to both our citizens and tourists. Tourism brings in more revenue to the city and to the county. In fact, some of the most well-known bridges around the world have increased their popularity because of illuminated bridge lights. Illumination will create a distinguished, distinguished signature with a more appealing look than that of a dull and boring bridge. It creates a unique visual experience, particularly during holidays. Most importantly, it will add vibrancy to the city of Palatka and become a focal point for the entire city and will add to the beautification of the Palatka Riverfront that so many people have already invested in. It gives visitors and locals a new reason to spend time in the city of Palatka. LED lighting is among the most energy-efficient options a municipality can choose when deciding ways to improve the community. FDOT would completely fund this project and would handle the construction from start to finish. Their ask is that we, some agency, whether it be us or the city, would enter into a maintenance agreement, which is in your packet. FDOT has already provided us with an estimated operating cost for the utilities, which is two options, a $10,000 option to a $20,000 option annually. And they have stated that the lights have a 20-year life expectancy since they are LED and they will, of course, will only burn during nighttime hours. So, you know, I know that we spoke about this before and we had one commissioner mention that he would prefer it to go to the city. And then I had another commissioner during the previous discussion say that he would prefer the county do it because he wanted the county to have control over the light schedule. So that is one of the things that is part of this, is whichever entity signs the agreement, the maintenance agreement, they would be in charge of working with FDOT on the schedule of what lights go, the color schemes. There are some, some things that are very particular that they're going to, the state, there's a policy and so like red, white, and blue during Fourth of July, Memorial Day, and stuff like that. So there are some specifics that they adhere to and then you write a resolution. Basically, the governmental agency that signs the management agreement writes a resolution, submits it, FDOT approves it for their, for their lighting work plan. So I'm here today to simply say, let's, let's move it forward. And speaking with the, with the City Commission, it sounded like they would consider it on their next agenda, but they wanted more than a 50-50 match. So if we choose to go with the city as the lead agency on the maintenance agreement, then I would like to propose a 60-40 match where the, where the county is participating at 60% level. I think that would hopefully make it go forward at the city level or the county takes it on as a project and we sign the maintenance agreement. So that's where I'm at. I'm looking for some discussion and hopefully we can move this all down the road.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson, for the presentation. Commissioner Turner, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the 60%, just one question before I start. The 60% would be just for the utilities, not for the total agreement?
It's whatever we propose. So if we, when I presented it, I presented it as the utilities and the maintenance. As, so whatever, you know, if they sign the agreement, then, then we would be at a 60% match. So we would have to have a separate MOU or something like that if the city were to sign it.
Okay, thank you. Where to start? It's kind of surprising to me that this has made it this far. It really, truly is. Because not only are we, not only are we going to spend $20,000 a year, which is $400,000 for utilities, projected utilities over the lifetime of the lights, we also, if you read the maintenance agreement that was included in the packet, the maintenance agreement says that later down the road that we've got to replace the lights and maintain them when they go bad down the road. Now, if DOT is putting 17, the copy I have of the five-year plan is seven, over $17 million to shine lights up on the bridge, it's bad enough that we have to spend $400,000 of the taxpayers' money to, to do this. But it's even worse when we're taking on, I mean, it's, it's very reasonable to say that there's a $10 million unfunded liability down the road 20 years when these lights go bad, if they last a projected 20 years. Now, we just spent the last five years, six and a half years until, well, the first five years I was here, trying to fund the communication system for $7 million that had our, our first responders and our police department in jeopardy of going home at night with their life and we couldn't do it. We couldn't fund it. So under this maintenance agreement that DOT, it's basically flat says, you fix it or we'll fix it and send you a bill. Now, I'm not going to be here when these lights go bad, but somebody's going to be sitting in this seat when DOT sends them a bill for $10 million because you had some pretty lights shining up on your bridge for 15 years. So, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little upset about this.
It's okay, Mr. Turner.
You know, we, we're, we've been trying and beating our head against the wall, not only for the communication system, but for the healthcare clinic and trying to get up and trying to find the money for, have better healthcare for our employees and start a clinic. We've been trying to, to beat our heads against the wall to come up with enough funds to, 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 to give the people that work for this county a living wage and where they're not living in poverty when they worked for Putnam County. And we've worked hard to get that done over the last few years. And it's been a job to try to get that increased. It's not been easy. The, the $10 million that they're going to give us, or that we would be, they were, they're, they're going to give us a liability for in 15 years, that would pay off the jail that we bust our ass every year to pay payments on. That would pay off at that time, the utility system in East Palatka that we, that we work hard to meet those payments every single year. I can't believe that we're even discussing having a $10 million-plus liability, if, a $10 million-plus liability to this county in the future. And it's not a matter of if. It's not. It's going to happen. Them lights are not going to last forever. They're not. The, there's no way that I can see, because these lights are not navigational, they're just decorative. So you can't, in any way in my mind, can you say that we're raising the safety of, of the, the bridge? Not there. These are not safety-oriented lights. They're decorative lights. So I don't see where you can tag this for any kind of safety, welfare of the public. You can't. It's just decorative for aesthetics. I don't see how you can tag this to economic development because out of all the people that I've talked to, and there's been a lot of them, and business owners and whatever, they all laugh at this and say, do you really think that anybody's going to come open a business around here because there's lights on the bridge? So you can't tag economic development in this. You're, you're reaching for stars. But all that being said, if you look in the packet, one of the most important things in this of all was what our attorney said, that if you're going to take this on, at the very least, you need to have a phrase in there that says that you can get out of this if you need to in the future without writing a check. And if they won't let us do that, or they won't help us refund these in 15 years or whenever, they can't just send us a bill that's basically going to bust the county. Where are you going to get it from? You're going to, $10 million? You're going to have half the sheriff department you got now? You're going to where? Where are you going to get $10 million in unfunded liability? I haven't got a clue. And I've been doing this six and a half years. Know where the money is, most of it. I just don't see how that we'll ever, that, that we would sit here today and even consider moving this forward with that type of liability, that unfunded liability for future generations in this county and future commissioners in this county, all over the bridge being a little prettier. Sorry, I can't get there. I do believe one thing. I believe that if this moves forward, that at the very least, this commission owes it to theirself and the citizens of this county to listen to our legal counsel and put that in there, that if, that we have got to be able to get out of this if it's going to be a total detriment to this county sometime in the future. That's the only thing that I would implore you to do if, because I don't know that I have the votes to vote this down today, but I'm going to tell you right now, the people that vote for this today, it's going to be known as your lights from this day forward. It's not going to be other people's lights out there that may or may not want this. It's going to be whatever commissioner votes for this. And the only thing that I'm asking is that you be prudent about it if you're going to vote for it. And you put in there what our attorney asked us to put in there, which was a line that says we can get out of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Mr. Adamsack, you have the floor?
I'm not against the line being added to it. I love the idea and the people I spoke to loved the idea, too. I didn't talk to anyone that was a naysayer about it. I spoke to several businesses as I was tasked by the prior chairman. I didn't speak to every business, obviously, because that would be an undertaking for so, because we don't have a list of all the businesses in the county. So I'm for this if it's proposed in the right way. And I, I think that if, in any circumstance, we're not the ones determining how the bridge is lit, then I would be opposed to it, especially for the majority stakeholder in the funding of it. If the city wanted to go 100% on their own, they could do whatever they want. They could have already done that. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. And anybody, Mr. Pickens?
Go ahead. You can go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
I appreciate Mr. Turner's comments. I, I have some concerns. I had the first concern of who would be in control of the lights. I didn't, as a commissioner, I didn't want everything to do with that. It does benefit the Palatka area more than any other area. But we're all Putnam County. Let me make that clear. We're all Putnam County. To me, decorative lights really, I don't know if it'd improve navigational uses. With your, I mean, Leo, this is the second time, and I know you're for this and I compliment you on that and your research and going to the City of Palatka Council to, to talk to them, they don't want to take this on themselves, the whole thing?
They didn't indicate that, but I didn't present it that way in all fairness. I didn't present it for them to take on. Their, and I don't believe they would because they said, well, your budget's bigger than ours. And so they wanted that 60% match. I think they would be willing to sign the agreement. There wasn't, there wasn't anybody on the board, and you can go back and watch the video, there wasn't anybody on the board that said, we don't want to sign the agreement. It said, the comment that came from just about every one of them was, we want more than a 50% match. That's why I was proposing a 60-40.
Okay. We do, I got to say this. I can't hold it back. We, we have a bigger budget, yes. We also got more bills, too.
I agree.
More employees and everything. And that's not against you at all.
Yeah.
Not against anybody. It's just, I'm, I'm a realist. I am concerned that the, the power is not that much, but it's the maintenance on it. And it does say here that the agency is responsible for replacing them at the time that they need to be replaced, which is a pretty big expense if they're allowing up to $17 million for this project. So I have a lot of concerns with this. Commissioner Harvey, that's all I got right now.
Thank you. Mr. Adamsack, you have a last comment?
Yeah, excuse me. On that perspective, I, I get what you're saying, Bill, and I appreciate your comments. As far as my take on the city is, the reason why I don't think we should do a split, I'm 460 for you, that makes sense to me. It's not a big deal. But to go any further wouldn't make sense the other way, where they, we took on less because, unless we take on it all and we just own it, because they're the biggest beneficiary of it, to be honest. So that's why I'm surprised they didn't just, I was always under the impression, the reason why, I'm the opposite. I was surprised it didn't come sooner from the board. I, and I thought that it was in delays because I was hoping the city was just going to take it on because they, they kind of owned the one side of the bridge and part of the other side. So that, I was under the impression that's where that was held up and I guess that wasn't the case. So I don't know. I don't know why I'm saying this. It just, I, I think that, I, I love the idea. I think we should move it forward, but...
What was that? I didn't understand that.
I love the idea. I think it should move forward, but under the guise that it's our project and it's, we own it.
Right. And I, and I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Ms. Wilkinson?
I did see, Commissioner Turner, I did see the comment from legal counsel and I wholeheartedly agree that if the agreement says it's, it's a year-to-year and it says to only be terminated by the Department of, from DOT, that we should say and, or, or, I'm not sure whatever the right word is, the county as well. To say that it's a $10 million liability, I don't know that I agree with that because we don't know, we really don't know what the liability. I know what you're saying. Your point is that, that we don't know and it could be up, up to that or even more. I feel like that if we got to a, I mean, the, the state is wanting to invest in Putnam County. This is not money that we'd be able to come up with on local dollars. We wouldn't be able to do it. The fact that they're willing to do this in our city, in our county, is a huge opportunity that I just think we just can't say no to. The reality is, if we don't accept this project, then it's going to move on to the next city. And why can't we, or the next county, and why can't we be as good as Jacksonville? Why can't we be as good as all these other counties and cities that have beautiful lit bridges? Why not? And so I understand what you're saying about the math, but I feel like the return on investment for, for the utilities is easy math. I mean, we're, if we split it with the county, I mean, the city will pay $600 a month, maybe, you know, $800 a month for a six, $17 million investment. That's a good return on investment, in my opinion, for this huge capital improvement project. And I really felt like if we were, and I know it's not in writing, so that if we got to, there was some huge expense. I can't believe that FDOT wouldn't work with us in the future to, to resolve the issue. I mean, I don't see that they're going to spend $18 million or $17 million now in a capital improvement project and then 15 years from now, there's an, there's a, you know, a, the, the... years from now, there's an, there's a, you know, the, the example that Mr. Turner used was you had to replace the lights. Okay. So we estimate it to be 10 million. It's hard to believe that we couldn't go back to the state, go for an appropriation, go for an FDOT project, go for a federal grant, something that would help us with that. I just don't, I don't, I feel like we can't see the forest through the trees.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I think I see the trees and the forest real good on this one. Um, the city thought the same thing when they did the walkway under the bridge. They took that on from, um, from DOT as a maintenance deal. And the walkway under the bridge, the city's put 200,000 in it in the last two and a half, three years, and they haven't even worked on the superstructure underneath of it yet. All they did was continually working on the deck. They've been back to DOT multiple times and asked them to participate in rebuilding that walkway under the bridge. So you're telling...
And FDOT did approve a recent project for that.
I understand that, but not without them spending a bunch of money on it. My point here is, is that you're taking on, and if you put this in there and they'll agree to it, what Rich said, I'm still not going to vote for it because I think it's an absolute waste of time and money. And I've looked at it from every angle that I can, but if, if we want to put Leota's lights on the bridge, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Turner?
What?
It's not Leota's lights. It would be the Memorial Bridge.
Okay.
You can call them Paul's lights. I'm all right with that.
Whatever.
We're not going to do that.
If we want to put lights on the bridge, decorative lights on the bridge, fine. That's fine. But we need to put that in there, what our legal counsel told us to put in there, because you're taking on a $10 million, and I'm being, I'm being conservative. If they're give us 17 million to put them up originally, don't you think that the lights are 10 million of it?
No, I don't.
Well, what are they spending the other on then?
Well, they have to build it, and they have to put electricity, and they have, I mean, there's a lot more than just the light bulbs.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Well, I wasn't done, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, sir.
Um, like I said, I, number one, I think you need to listen to our attorney here if we're going to do this. I'm not voting for it.
I said I would.
But if y'all are going to do it, I think you need to listen to your attorney.
I agree with that.
I think that, uh, that you need to realize without a doubt, this is going to be a future unfunded liability that, that will, that could possibly prevent the county from doing things that it desperately really needs, a lot worse than decorative lights. Um, and like I said, if the city would take, would take this on, when I, when I made the comment at the last meeting where we discussed this, that I would be even willing to split the electrical lights with them for a year or whatever, that was the lighting portion of it, not all the rest of it. So it evidently has gone from splitting the lighting portion and them take lead, which it came back to me, they offered lead, not in a public meeting, but they offered lead. And so, um, if that was the case, then if they took the lead and we could participate at 50% of the electricity or, and what have you, then I'd be good for it. I just can't let myself vote for the unfunded liability of this magnitude, knowing how hard that we try to do things around here that are more important than lights on the bridge, such as the things that I mentioned earlier, such as this, the communication system, the healthcare, the livable wage for our employees, the things that, that we really do need to do. So, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, that ends our discussion. Do Chair Luntain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm of approval of the bridge lighting project that we, that the county takes on the maintenance agreement, construction and maintenance agreement with a change that was proposed by, um, our legal counsel, if he can work that out with FDOT.
A proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
We have a proper second for discussion. Mr. Adamsack, you have the floor?
I guess, Rich, what, what specifically are you looking to add to that? I just want to understand it.
I was just looking for something, understanding that a contract that exists forever is a very long time. Um, I would say that, you know, if the useful life of it's 20 years, then at least, um, have something where five years, 10 years, 15 years, that the county has the ability to ask for termination of the contract with, currently there's the one year, um, year by year notice provision. So something of that nature is what I would recommend.
Yeah. So on page 139, item number four, where it says term, that paragraph is what you would be amending?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I mean, to me, the cleanest is that, um, the last three words, unless terminated by the department or the agency.
Right.
That's how I would phrase that.
I agree with that.
Could we, I'm going to withdraw my second. Could we have you clarify that wording?
Yes.
In that line?
Ms. Wilkinson, you have the floor?
Yep, give me a second.
Okay.
I make the motion that we, that the county signs the construction and maintenance agreement as it relates to the Memorial Bridge lighting project, amending paragraph number four, term. So it would say unless terminated by the department or agency.
Second.
It's a one, one year, one year terms.
Second.
I have a question. Are we going to allow Mr. Commando to enter into discussions with FDOT on a five or a 10 or a 15, or is this just year by year?
If you put or agency, it would be year by year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Fine. Okay, good. All right. Any further discussion on the matter?
Just clarification.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
So basically, if DOT won't do this, then it's either going to have to come back or whatever.
Correct.
The motion is they, they take the contract with the amended language.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay, let's do roll call. Ashley, I, I didn't hear all the...
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Pass this three to one. Thank you.
That's what I heard.
Three to two, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on. Appointments, starting with Commissioner Adamsack. Do you have any appointments you'd like to make today?
I have two today.
Okay, good.
Um, for Parks and Recreation District Five appointment, I would like to reappoint Dan Dixon. We verified that he does want to stay on there. And for the Planning Commission District Five vacancy, I would like to appoint Justin Morris.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Turner, do you have any appointments you'd like to make today?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Affordable Housing Committee, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Sheila McCoy for the District Three. I would also like to nominate Kim Barnes at the at-large position, which would take a vote of the board.
Okay. Kim Barnes has been, uh, we don't need a second, so we just need to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Kim Barnes is back on. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Parks and Recreation Committee, I'd like to appoint Ms. Amy Hedstrom to the District Three seat on it. Um, she's already filled out her application, I understand. Is that right, Ms. Young? Okay. So that's, uh, already been filled out. And that's all I have for today, Mr. Chairman.
Fine choices. Thank you. Mr. Pickens, you have the floor? Any...
Excuse me. I was going to renominate Kim Barnes, but Mr. Turner's already done that, so I have none.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wilkinson, do you have any appointments?
I have none. Thank you.
All right. And I have none. Moving on, we're going to do public comments on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matter, unless the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the back of the meeting room at the entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to Deputy Clerk Ashley, who sits to the right of the podium, my left. And we have two cards here. So our first card, Rhonda Drackett Williams...
Williams, 521 Federal Point Road, East Palaca. Um, I'm here today to say a big thank you. And it's mainly to you all and to the administration for allowing us, meaning Hastings Main Street, to have an adoption event this past Saturday. Um, I'm, I serve on the board of Hastings Main Street. My colleague on the board with me, Tony Coleman, couldn't stay, but he wanted you all to know his thanks as well. Uh, Tony serves currently with the St. John's County School Board. He's a school board, uh, member. So, and he was actually the first person to adopt a pet on Saturday morning. So, um, he brought his son over and, and made the adoption. So I just have to tell you all what a pleasure it was working with the team. I'm sorry, I can't, uh, speak this morning. I want to say a special thank you to Kathy Tillman, what a great leader she is of that group. Um, she does an excellent job. She did excellent job coming up to it. And let me just tell you all, I think she works 24/7. I'm not sure when that woman has time to sleep. Um, I say that because it just so happened, uh, two weeks before this event, we found a, uh, we found a dog, and in our community...
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're on it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
They're doing a good job too, by the way.
Okay. Sorry about that. Sorry, Rhonda, about that. Go right ahead.
So we actually found a, a lost stray dog in our community. Um, it was very ill. We actually took it to an emergency vet in St. Augustine. Um, we posted it out on the various pages. She was the first one to start responding at whatever it was, seven, eight o'clock at night. She responded up through 10 o'clock. She was resharing it. She was helping us. We, she communicated with the emergency vet in, in St. Augustine. We ended up finding the family and returning, um, the dog belonged to, um, to someone, um, off that area, off of Edgefield. So that was, but her team, and I've seen since how they're just, she's online all the time and is, and is making, um, really making a difference in a lot of ways. So I want to thank her and then her employees, Brittany Nelson, Kelsey Johnson, Sammy Prothero, I'm hoping I say that right, Kim Cronin, and Seeker Jordan, and then also the volunteers that were there on Saturday, BJ Tillman, Bob Thomas, Jody Blood, and Sam Blood. They were amazing, so many of them. I think we had 28 dogs. In that 24-hour period, I think we adopted out. At the day of the event, we adopted four, and like I said, Tony Coleman's family was the first one. Um, the dogs were all well taken care of, well fed. She sent me pictures ahead of times. We had made a logo, so we had cut our event Mutz on Main, um, an adoption program. And so we, we had a ball, and the animals, I think, had a great time. Um, I think a poor, several of those ladies, some of those dogs were going to, were so excited to be out, they were going to just drag them down the road. So I was worried about them. But thank you for waiving the adoption fees. Thank you for making the animals come with, um, all their shots and be chipped. And, uh, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Harvey, because there's, the next adoption event is in your community. And it's going to be, uh, Mar, um, February 24th. So they currently have about 20 cats and 70 dogs at the shelter right now. So as quickly as they can rotate them out, they rotate back in with a new group. So, um, thank you so very much. And, um, I have personally offered, um, some funding for them to create some materials and things that they need for an adoption team to go out. And so I'm going to be working with Kathy to do that. So thank you again so much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Turner?
Do we have, how did we state our motion on the adoption fee wa, uh, waiver that we did for this? Did it, was it just for that one event, or is from now on for any of our county adoption events?
We gave the authority to Mr. Sugg.
There you go.
Okay.
Or staff.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to do that again.
No.
Because that needs to continue.
Rhonda, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, to the Hastings Main Street for reaching out to us and saying, hey, would you like to do this? I appreciate that. Um, we are trying, as, as you know, and hopefully other people in the community are seeing, we're trying really hard to get pets adopted and get them rescued and, and constantly doing everything we can. And you're right, Kathy Tillman is, she's number one, and she's got a great team with her. I couldn't ask for a better team. And I appreciate you and your, and your group for reaching out. I mean, we went across the county line, right? And how, how better is that, that we can reach over to St. John's County and say, hey, we got some animals. Would you like to adopt them? And while you, you, some people say it was only four, but we got more rescued as well that went to some rescued agencies. So it was very, a very successful event. I'm sorry I couldn't make it out there. I had something going on with my family, but thank you for, um, for your group and allowing that to happen.
And I think what ended up happening is because we had so much publicity out there about the event on Saturday, and we had the Mutz on Main logo, and then Kathy did all these great pictures and, and then, and superimposed the names of each of the dogs over the pictures, and we started posting those, and she was posting those and getting shared. So I think as a result of the publicity in that 24-hour period, there were about a dozen dogs that were adopted out. So, but only four actually at the event. But we, we actually got asked several times, what, what's Putnam County doing here?
Yeah.
And, um, and you have to understand that if you were born and raised in the Hastings area, and I, and I was in that area, my family is, uh, farmed, um, Hastings considers itself sort of an entity unto itself, and we consider ourselves being part of Putnam and St. John's Counties. And I think you see that with the farming and the agriculture. It's sort of like we're, we belong to both worlds and, and, and it's a blessing to be able to do that. So thanks for allowing us to, um, to do that cross, um, connection.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, Tyrone Finley. If you will, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Tyrone Finley, East Palaca, Florida, 160 West Lewisboro Road, East Palaca.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm here representing residents of East Palaca on the CRA, Special District we were trying to form.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm here to get y'all input on it, because we had spoke with members on this board already.
We're not going to debate today, so do you have a question?
No, I was wondering, had you guys reviewed it? I'm not...
Okay. Mr. Turner, would you like to take?
Yes, sir. I, I think that I'll help some here. I attended a Zoom meeting with, uh, multiple people in the community back months ago. And, um, and they're, they're having the University of Florida and some other planners help them with coming up with, uh, different options to fund some projects in East Palaca. Um, I wasn't sure at that time that we could even have a CRA. I've been talking to Mrs. Sharon Austin, and I wasn't sure at that time that we could even have a CRA in a non-incorporated area. And so I asked if the attorney could look into it, and he did, and it is possible. But that doesn't mean that I'm on board with it. Um, and the main reason is, is because Ms. Austin and the group are saying that they were looking for 20 to 30,000 a year to do, uh, wayfinding signs and to do certain projects in the East Palaca community. Well, with the amount of area that they're talking about trying to turn into a CRA, you'd be talking about a possible million dollars a year in county funds a few years from now, just like the city's TIF fund. Well, it, it was frozen at a certain level, and then the, um, and then over the years, I think we paid them $983,000 or something this year for the CRA downtown. Uh, and it's paid for with TIF funds. It comes directly out of, or I think maybe some from the cities too, I'm not sure, but still, it comes out of, of our, of our pockets. So I told Ms. Austin in an email that it would probably be better at that time.
Okay.
To try to come up with what type of, 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 what type of things that y'all were trying to get funded, because I don't believe the appetite is going to be here of the board, and I'm certainly not speaking for any other board members in this, but I don't believe that, that the appetite will be here for the board to create a CRA in all of East Palaca because of the potential funding decrease on ad valorem taxes that would represent to the county. When I talked to Ms. Austin about it, I know that she said that, that she was told that it would be like $30,000 a year. No, sir. It would be more like a million dollars a year in, in, uh, in reduced ad valorem taxes to the county. So I think there's, uh, better ways to get the things funded that you, that y'all want funded than to do a, a CRA in East Palaca. So if y'all's group would come up with a list of the things that you're wanting, like wayfaring, you know, signs or something like that, it may be something that the, the board may have an appetite for, to help with. I'm not sure. I'll have to bring that to the board once I see your list. And, uh, but I think that's the way, the better way to handle it.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we close that portion of our meeting? Don't see anybody rushing forward, so we'll close that... Don't see anybody rushing forward, so we'll close that meeting. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to update the board on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. County Attorney, Mr. Rich Commando.
Nothing today, just happy Mardi Gras.
Happy Mardi Gras. Mr. Suggs, County Administrator.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we'll start to my left, Mr. Pickens.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman Harvey. Just want to go ahead and congratulate John William Rebels again on his award. He's, like I said, just a fine man and runs a really, really good operation down there in Crescent City, District One, I believe. And I want to compliment everybody, Rhonda and, and Commissioner Wilkinson and the Animal Control Staff, everybody that are participating in the, the animal adoptions, going out through the county to do that. I think it's just a part of, of getting out and show that our animal control services are, are good, and with this new facility, they're going to be better, and we're making improvements. And I thank Commissioner Wilkinson for leading that. I met with the mayors in South Putnam, Mayor Watts, Mayor Svengala, and Mayor Myers last week, and it was a really good meeting. And we discussed a lot of different issues throughout the county and within District One. And I'll close by saying I really appreciate the board moving forward the purchase of the excavator, because we do have a project soon as we get it in District One that we can, we can test that out on that...
Out of order.
Out of order.
I will, I will expect a report back to the board of how that machine performs. So thank you, that's all I have, and happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
For the public, a little levity never hurt any situation, and Commissioner Pickens just used up a year's worth, so.
Right.
Mr. Adamsack, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I guess happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I kind of, everything he said is spot on. I think animal services is definitely seeing improvements, the leadership that we have there is great. Obviously, just like any agency, we'd love to have more employees, more people helping, more everything, but we got to live within our means. I'm excited about us moving forward to lighting of the bridge. I understand the, the debate about it, and I appreciate the debate, and I actually think it improved what we proposed, what was motioned on, so I appreciate that from Commissioner Turner. And that's where I'll leave it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Tony's not here today. I have a name of an individual that I would like for y'all to, I was going to give it to him, but I have a name of an individual that lives in one of the subdivisions that's having some issues. It's the MSBU subdivision in there behind Watts Funeral Home, back in that little area right in there. I'll give you the name if you would carry it to him after the meeting, and I'd like someone to get up, get in contact with him. He was having some real heartburn with the amount, with their dues going from thirty-five or twenty-seven dollars a year to three hundred and something a year in their MSBU, and I don't think he realizes that he needs to go talk to the lady, that I've forgotten her name, but...
Terry, Terry Sorrell?
Yes, yes, Terry, to go and, and, and request the things through their chairman of their committee or whatever. So if Tony could get a hold of him, and I'll give you the name when the meeting's over, could get a hold of him and try to work something out there, I'd appreciate it. And you know, I want to say one last thing, and it's not just about the bridge lights, it's about whatever. I do want to say one thing that I think is very refreshing, that we can come in here and have a very frank discussion that we all are very passionate about and walk out that door and smile at one another. That's how it ought to be, guys, I'm just telling you right now. Nobody gets all butthurt and nobody's like, not wanting to talk to anybody or whatever. It just doesn't happen. So I'm just telling you, I think that's refreshing with the commission that we have. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. No comment. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, and I agree, I concur with you, Commissioner Turner. And I want to go on record and just say, the District Two on the start to pay got a little shorted, so when I go to do mine next year, I'm going to need some, some leeway, I'm just saying, from District Five, particularly, I mean, District One.
Well, Bill won't be here next year, you might actually get something.
I might actually get something next year. Just joking. Yeah, just kidding.
The levity never stops.
Yeah, right, since we're already doing that. On a serious note, we did have a ribbon cutting for the, for the Barden, at Barden Park, also known as Etnaia Park. And I just want to thank this commission for agreeing to allow that partnership with FPL and for allowing us to put that, that in. I think it's a big help in that community, and I know they appreciate it, like I said out there. We definitely, I've definitely, definitely seen more people in, in that park than ever before. And you'd be amazed what a little swing sec would do, but it's actually improving people going out and, and participating in that. And then I also want to say that, so that was Friday, and then Friday night, I had the privilege of going to Night to Shine, and that was put on by First Baptist Church and Calvary Missionary Church on the north side of Palatka. And if you don't know what Night to Shine is, it's Tim Tebow's Foundation, where they do a prom for special needs people in the community. And they had about, they call them honored guests, and they have about ninety to a hundred in Putnam County that came. And when, and they drove them around the limous, in a limousine around the block, they had the red carpet treatment, they come down the red carpet, people were clapping. It was beautiful, you guys. It was awesome. And so they came through the red carpet, they went in, they danced the night away. And I was supposed to be taking care of the caregiver group, and I was visiting with somebody, and then we walked into the dance floor, and a friend of mine named Caitlin, she's, was an honored guest, and I'm dancing with her a little bit. Was not my intention. Next thing you know, I'm leading a Congo line, so it was like, it was the best thing, and I never expected it. Now, I couldn't walk much the next day, but the point is, it was such a blessing to see that movement in this community and on, and the coming together of the two churches, and just such a blessing. I think, I, I think everybody that attended took something away that was really heartfelt to them. And so I just want to thank that group for putting that on. And happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. Let's not do the Congo line here, though, if we don't...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have one more comment.
Okay.
Is there, could we, as quickly as possible, try to get the agenda for next week's workshop, where we can start? A lot of times workshop takes a little more study than a regular commission.
We're going to be meeting after this meeting for the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I got a few comments. So over the weekend, Super Buds for Super Bowl, our Rotary Club did that. Senator Scott Saitman Dinner, he was here a few weeks ago. That was well attended and very nicely put on by the people that were there. And Rhonda and Donna and Barbara and Ann, and there was a bunch of them, and I'm going to get in trouble for not mentioning all, but that's okay. This coming Saturday night, Wild Game Feast. I think if you can't find something to do in this county, you're not looking for it.